At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, February 8th, 2024. First item on the agenda is a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Todd Nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Nation. Michelle, can we have a calling of the roll, please? Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowlin.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Loudermilk. Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent. I received a message from Councilwoman Loudermilk, the county council meeting which she's in service at is running long tonight, so. Okay, next on the agenda is 30 minutes of time, which we allow for public comment, and you're allowed to speak on items that are not on the agenda. I'll go through the signup sheet. Mr. Donald Hyde, state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Well, normally I could do that, but I might go a little over that on this one.
Just a little.
A little. But it's an important reason, as you'll find out when I start talking about it. Have you been paying attention to the national news? If you have, like I have, California is in a big wave of trouble. Now, this may sound like I'm guessing, but I don't think I am guessing. I think if they've really looked into it, they'd find out I was right, more right than wrong. What has happened in California in the last four years has really changed their climate, and I'm talking about their climate, big time. Over the last four years, they've had wildfires, both in California, Oregon, and Washington, and they've wiped out a whole lot of trees. Now, I keep telling you people that trees produce the air we breathe, and when you wipe out a lot of trees, you wipe out a lot of the ability to put air in the atmosphere. And that, of course, if you don't have air in the atmosphere, will change what's going on with the wind. If the wind is real thin, the wind blows, shall we say, fast. Now, Terre Haute, I've seen Terre Haute starting to build, and this city council has the power to pass rules. Let's say they build something and cut down 30 trees, they ought to be having to, they ought to have a rule, say they either got to replace the 30 trees or actually do better than that, 60 trees. Now, it takes 20 years for a tree to go from a little tree into a big enough tree to produce the air that we need. Now, I don't know why we keep cutting down trees and not putting back trees. I'd say this county alone could use literally 100,000 trees, and this county alone, and it wouldn't affect growing or anything else. And it might help the soil, when the roots get down in the soil, they'll keep the soil from moving because the tree's there. A lot of things happen when you have plants, and when you take out all the plants, well, I might tell you, watch the news about California right now. The rain is really doing a lot of damage to the place, and it's done that because I've been to California. They got concrete all over the place, not like we have here, where there's big areas of ground to soak up the rainwater. No, they don't have that much ground. I went there. All it's concreted over, and that's the problem we're getting. We're getting more and more concrete driveways that cars do park on occasionally. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying there's some parking lots aren't needed, but occasionally. And then there are other parking lots that have been there for years, like the mall, and at one time, they needed all that parking places. Yet now the mall has a huge concrete thing, no places where they could grow trees or let the rain go down into the ground. And yet, nobody ever parks on them, at all, because nobody's there. We have to do a better job of management of where we put the concrete. And when we put concrete down, we need to put places in that concrete where trees can grow, because I'm telling you right now, guys, we're making the same mistake as we grow bigger, as California, as Los Angeles did. And if we get to the point where there's more concrete on the ground than dirt on the ground, than the problems California's got, they're going to be our problems, and we live in a valley. So as the rain soaks up and comes down, part of our city, forget about one foot, it's going to be two or three-foot at partses. And a whole areas of this county will be underwater, because you got to go to Fruit Ridge before you run into the hills. You got to go south all the way down to pass that one park before the round grows up, and the hills are there. Go north, huh, you might as well be in Park County before you go north and get anything. So we have to watch what we do. The city council determines who gets to build and what they can build, and if they're removing trees, the city council has the power to tell them they got to put back some trees somewhere. And we need to, ourselves, as a taxpaying group, we need to plant more trees. And by the way, I'm not talking about little tiny trees for decoration. I'm talking about oaks. I'm talking about the trees that grow up 300 foot in the air. Granted, we got to be careful where we put them, but we still need them. And by the way, for them trees to grow 300 foot up in the air, takes about 100 years. We need to be able to plant trees and get air back here and have less, have more ground, to keep the ground from being padded over with concrete or asphalt. Well, it's going to take all the above, and the city council and the county council, you guys control that. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
President.
Councilperson Chalos.
If I'm not, I think I'm correct. We have a city forester that addresses that, do we not?
That we need.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted everyone to be aware.
Thank you.
Sorry about my voice.
Thank you. Next on public comments is Tess Stevens and Amos Stevens.
Since we signed in, do I need to say?
Yeah, for the record and for the audio recording.
My name is Tess Stevens, and I reside at 1355 Locust Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, 47807.
Thank you.
I come, I have a letter here to just read to you all. There's enough copies for everyone to have one. Greetings from the 4th Episcopal District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church. It is my distinguished pleasure to address the Terre Haute City Council this evening. The African Methodist Episcopal Church is the oldest black ran organization in the history of the United States. Our denomination has led the movement for equality for two centuries. Historic Allen Chapel has led the city of Terre Haute in equality since 1837. Historic Allen Chapel has been in the forefront of equity in desegregation, education, politics, and entrepreneurial partnerships. As I stand on the shoulders of the past leaderships from this presidential congregation, I'm obligated to ask for clarification and understanding on the following matters. First, what is the official procedure for requesting ARPA funding and receiving feedback? Second, will transparency occur for the organizations receiving ARPA funds and how funds are used? Thirdly, how will the city of Terre Haute share data on the impact of funding to disproportionately disenfranchise populations? In closing, the community members, the committee members, I'm sorry, as title, along with Historic Allen Chapel hereby request $3 million in ARPA funds for the renovation and repurposing of the Hope Community Center of Knowledge as a minority business center in Terre Haute. We would like to use those funds for programming and to renovating the building. And it is a great possibility, if we can get some of those funds, that we could possibly get matched by the Historical Landmarks Preservation Society on some of the renovation costs. So I do not have letters of support with me. As you all know, some of you that were here in Pat, when I made an ask, we've asked initially for $12 million, and we've brought that ask down considerably, because we recognize that the funding pool is dwindling away. But we also recognize that all of our efforts in the past have not had a formal reply from the city council or from the mayor's office in the past, and this mayor or office has not yet had the opportunity to respond. But we need to know now, in the new administration, what the procedure is moving forward so that we may go about this in the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Vincent Kelly, second. You want to state your name and your addresses for the record, please?
Sophia Crist.
Right, you don't have to speak up. Into the microphone.
My name is Sophia Crist, and I live at 1800 South 26th Street in Indiana, Terre Haute.
Okay.
My name's Vincent Kelly, and I live at 1326 South 16th Street.
Still can't hear you. Is the mic?
I don't think the microphone works.
Yes, try and turn them out.
Here. The mic's working. It's picking it up. They just need to turn it off.
Right in the mic.
My key. Sorry, I mean, not really, but you know what I mean.
Right in, yeah. We want to hear what you have to say, so speak right into the microphone, please.
Me and Vincent work for this, a company named ILEAD. ILEAD is where we are from a group of...
Yeah, you have to talk louder, right?
We're from a group of teens that try to prevent nicotine and tobacco use. We do many things in our community.
So there will be a Circle of Change Community in Action Conference hosted by Drug-Free Vigo County at the Terre Haute Convention Center, Monday, February 26, 2024, from 9:00 to 3:30. It is to talk about preventing cycles of substance use disorder to reduce trauma and improve the community's health and well-being, and talk about youth mental health. ILEAD will have a panel there, and people can ask us questions, and there are seven breakout sessions. ILEAD will be part of one of them, and we will also be talking about our DC trip.
We also are a part of a group called CADCA, which stands for Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America. It is in DC every last week of January. It offers many youth classes that talk about prevent, giving chances to our community. Just as a teen that is a high schooler in general, and just watching my friends that I grew up with in my life, and seeing them in this addiction, it's, it's, it's a really bad problem, and they're losing many relationships with friends, families, partners, and we've lost a lot of people, and a lot of, they've lost themselves. And I've seen really good people go really dark over simple things like a little vape or marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we also have papers.
Yeah, we have some papers.
Sure. Put the mayor to work there. He can bring him to us. Yeah, he's been sitting a little too long. Keep him busy.
First, I've seen him sit.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Is there anybody who wishes to make public comments that did not sign the sheet?
Just something to think about. I was thinking about, you know, like in the disaster, when a disaster befalls upon, a lot of times you have problems getting supplies and stuff. So I think that they really ought to have more warehouses in states that would keep, like, supplies, like diapers, you know, toilet paper, paper towels, you know, water, and stuff like that, so they would be readily available, you know, even if you'd get some MREs or something like that, some food stock or something, but you would have some warehouses, like it, like a couple warehouses in each state. It wouldn't be a job creator. About the best you could do is have, like, a security guard around the warehouse, but if a, if a county, you know, gave up the space to put a warehouse in, maybe that county could get, and if they have a disaster of their own, maybe they could get a little spatial consideration from FEMA, because they're allocating space for a warehouse, and a lot of people with one warehouse, they want some job creation because of that, not just storing goods in time of a need, but, you know, it's just, it's just something that I've seen where, you know, a lot of times they have problems with, you know, getting stuff, you know, just, just like all this baby formula, when they can't, when they can't make baby formula, or something like that, you know, I mean, that, that crashes, so, you know, to have more supplies available, especially like, you know, whenever a disaster befalls, all these items are needed. And if they had some, a couple warehouses in each state, they would be readily there, and the items there would be known, this is what we need, and we need to have these in stock so we can, so they could be rapidly deployed to where they need, you know, so, you know, it might just be where, you know, a county or something would like to, hey, you know, if we have a disaster of our own, we get a little spatial consideration from, from FEMA. See, that, that would help the city and the county absorb maybe less of the cost, because maybe FEMA would give, you know, 100% or 20% more consideration, you know, for the counties, you know, just something to think about.
Thank you. Anyone else? So at this time, I'll close public comments. Next on the agenda, corrections to the journal. Communication from the mayor.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Terre Haute City Council. I'm here to update you all on three of the previously passed ARPA projects, that there had been some concerns and questions regarding. The first of which, towards the last quarter of 2023, $5 million was allocated to Thrive West Central for Housing. Our next housing steering committee is next week, but I wanted to update you on all the progress that is going on with this program. This program originally started with $1.8 million from Ready, Ready 1.0, which was also funded through ARPA just at the state level. Vigo County was able to leverage that $1.8 million to a total investment on the private side of $44 million. So essentially, with $1.8 million in a micro grant program, $44 million worth of homes were built in Terre Haute and Vigo County. So a very successful program when it comes to housing. We've exerted our Ready 1.0 funds, and we're beginning to tap into the city and county $5 million and $5 million that have been combined and going towards housing. January 12th, we closed our third round of applications. We received eight applications for six projects, and those awards will be announced soon. Closing that application window, we have opened up the program, and there are now four total programs, which I've spoken about publicly several times. These programs are for seasoned builders, five years and up, newer builders, five years and below. Rehabilitation and nonprofits can apply for these grants as well. All the information is available at thrivewestcentral.com/housing. From a city's perspective, as I've mentioned in the past, we are continuing to transfer vacant lots to developers, and they can apply for that program. One house started this past Monday. I was there earlier today, and within 96 hours, the shell of that house is already put together. So builders are moving fast here in Terre Haute and Vigo County, and hopefully, after next Thursday's Housing Steering Committee meeting, I will come to you with another report on all the funds from ARPA and what they're doing for housing in Terre Haute and Vigo County. Pending any questions, I'll move on to the United Way update. So in the last quarter of 2023, $2.25 million was previously allocated to the United Way for two purposes. $750,000 went towards nonprofits, and $1.5 million went to small businesses. Those monies are now at United Way, and United Way will start their grant program for different communities within those two buckets to apply. On the nonprofit level, that $750,000, the goals are to build capacity and organizational development of nonprofit communities, strengthen organizations' infrastructure management and/or governance, and increase organizational effectiveness. So we will put all this information on the city's website, hopefully by the end of next week. I've also sent these documents to the city council members, and for transparency, from my end, there are some ineligible uses of funds for the nonprofit grant program through United Way. Debt payments, building leases, utilities, insurance, ongoing programmatic support, and routine operating expenses. And why do I mention that? These grants are anywhere from $50,000 to $10,000. Applications will start in March, but these funds are very important, because our goal is to create transformational projects within the United Way nonprofit sector instead of transactional programs that are routine, that we already have for our community. That mindset carries over to the $1.5 million allocated to the United Way for small businesses. So there are some specific eligible, eligibility criteria that's also in the packet that's been emailed, and again, that timeline is, we're looking at March of 2024 for the first round of applications, and hopefully, hopefully in October, we are allocating those funds to small businesses and nonprofits. That's what the current schedule reads. For the members of the council, this is the board makeup that's been proposed and approved previously. One appointed member from the Terre Haute City Council, which would be nominated by the president. The mayor of Terre Haute, United Way's executive leadership, the Terre Haute Chamber executive leadership, and community impact volunteers. It is important to note that the elected officials on this committee will not be voting members of this committee. A separate entity is determining, you know, who, who gets the funds, and we are there to monitor the process and ensure that it is transparent. This creates a system where folks who do this full-time nonprofit allocation will be kind of running the show, but the elected officials are there for the transparency aspect. With regards to the city radios, last week I mentioned that it was a $750,000 had previously been allocated as a $3.2 million bucket for public safety radios. I've got 11 packets, which I'll hand out to you all after the meeting, and it's just the quote. To get the rest of the city's radios up to speed, the exact model, the exact company, the exact vendors, the current price tag is $770, but there's one piece there that we're trying to get a lower bid on, which would pull that down to $730,000. But that's the radio update, and that would then move through the Board of Public Works once it clears legal. But I'll get you guys those packets, so you will literally be able to see the exact make and model of the radios that our Terre Haute city employees are using. The last update I have, I've got a couple copies back there, and forgive me, they're in black and white, so it's a little rudimentary. What we did, the, the city engineering department and the director of public works, we used the data from sewage billing and basically put on a map all the homes that are getting well water in the city of Terre Haute. We did make a mistake. We did not take out some larger commercial properties, so we're going to redo our map. And I'll pass out after this, and you'll see, that Terry Town neighborhood is the most consolidated residential group of folks on well water. This is kind of really informing our decision-making for that Indiana American Water project. I believe we're looking at a tentative date of March 4th or March 7th for that Indiana American Water meeting, which three council members will be a part of, to have an in-depth discussion of the Indiana American Water project proposed through the American Rescue Plan Funds. For the March 7th city council meeting, you'll see at the filing deadline, we'll bring several appropriations for ARPA projects, the ones that don't require as much of a dialogue. I've received several questions, specifically regarding the downtown Hotel project, Indiana American Water, and food desert. So the ones that are kind of, more conversation is needed, we will bring at a later city council meeting, but the ones that are, you know, folks are all invested in, for example, the parks, we've got to start construction quick, because that's already gone out to bid. So we'll bring some of those to the table in March for a vote, and then for the rest, we'll kind of roll them throughout the month of March and April. Pending any questions, that's our ARPA update for the day.
Council?
Mayor?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand the radio thing. Can you go into just a little bit more detail?
Yes.
What I think I understand that you're reporting to us or reminding us all of is that we have allocated $750,000 of ARPA money?
Semi-correct.
Okay, yeah.
$3.2 million was allocated, and I believe September of 2023, but I would have to check whether it was September or October.
I thought it was more, yeah, that's why I'm asking for clarity.
Yeah. $2.5 million has been spent for police and fire radios, because the proposal was brought forth as, well, we need this for public safety radios. Commercial radio honestly did a phenomenal job of getting the departments to what I call Min Four, minimum force, to fully capable with basically the best price, and they got that to $2.5 million. The remaining $750,000 is, has already been appropriated and earmarked for radios. So using those to complete the rest of the city's communications infrastructure, not just the handhelds, but the ports, most, more notably, the tower out here, the radio tower out here, that comes out to about $730,000 right now, and that's where the remaining $750 of funds would be used for.
So you're not asking us to allocate any more money toward radios, you're just reporting to us on what's, the status of the project?
Absolutely, yeah. That's just a report of funds that had already been approved, what we're doing with. And the big reason why I report it, previous administrations would run it through the Board of Public Works, and it'd be good, and in theory, they would never come here and provide that update, so I just wanted to provide that update, say, hey, we got the quote, we're going to get one more final quote to confirm that price, run it through legal, and then send it to the Board of Public Works.
Thank you for the clarification. It's hard for me to get used to this kind of communication and transparency, so forgive my, forgive my asking. These questions seem pretty obvious, all right? I yield.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle, any reports from city officials?
I did not receive any additional reports.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I don't believe there is one.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Items on first reading?
I believe, President Bowlin, you wanted to change the order?
Yes. On the agenda, we are going to move Resolution 3, 2024, to the top of the agenda list.
And Resolution?
And Resolution 2 will be heard after that.
You don't want to include Resolution 4 with Resolution 3?
Yes. Do I need to state that for the record?
You want them both together.
Can we do that?
Yeah. So why don't you just state Resolution 2 will be at the end?
Resolution 2, 2024, will be held at the end of the, ended the items. For items on first reading.
Resolution 3, 2024, appointing Mike Slagle as city council attorney.
And so do we have a petitioner for that, or it's me?
I think you're the petitioner.
I am? Go ahead.
So this, by statute, the city council can't hire their own attorney, and this is the formal approval process to select him for the attorney to represent the city council. It is a resolution, so no vote to take action is required.
Anybody from the council have any questions?
Public comments, I'm sorry.
Public comments on Resolution 3, 2024, which is appointing Mike Slagle as city council legal representation. Council comments?
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I'm really glad that we're hiring a city council attorney again. It's been a long time. This is an important step for us to take, and if there's no further discussion, I move for approval of Resolution Number 3, 2024.
Second. Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Nation to approve Resolution 3, 2024, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passed. Resolution?
Resolution 4, 2024, approving the expenditure for the city council attorney. This is per council rules to state the maximum expenditure for 2024.
Any public comments on Resolution 4, 2024, to approve the appropriation for paying our newly appointed city attorney, city council attorney?
I need to state my name again. Okay. What's this pay?
What's it not to exceed on the resolution, Michelle?
$22,000. $22,000.
It's a not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, so it could be up to that, it could be less. Depends on how much work we make him do.
Anyone else? Any council comments?
Madam President, if there are no further questions, I move to approve Resolution 4.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 4, 2024, made by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Chelos. All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 4, 2024, is approved. You can come join us at the council table. Please come join us at the council table.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Good luck.
While you're signing those, would you like me to read the next item?
Yes, please. Thank you.
If I can keep up with my agenda, we are reviewing CF1 form for 200 South 6th Street LLC. This is from Resolution 3, 2020. You should have a copy in front of you. For our new council members, if I may, this is the annual review of compliance with the tax abatement statement of benefits forms that was filed when the tax abatement was granted. They currently state what they estimated for number of employees and salary is what they're paying. As a reminder, if it is a single employee's salary listed on this form, it is considered compidential. You have the, you can take the action of finding them in substantial compliance, and no further action will be taken. The motion and second is given and a vote taken. If you find them not in substantial compliance, a hearing will need to be held within 30 days.
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
We do this every year, and this is for the benefit of the people listening and watching. We gave this company a tax abatement. This is the first of many that we will do over the course of the next few months. I would point out to my fellow council members that the number of current employees is basically the number that they estimated. In fact, it's exactly the number that they estimated, is one employee. And the salary is listed as what they estimated. Based on that, I would move to find, that we find 200 South 6th Street LLC in substantial compliance for their CF1 form for Resolution 3, 2020.
Second.
Have a request for substantial compliance on, let me find it, Resolution 3, 2020. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We find that 200 South 6th Street is in substantial compliance.
And I would encourage my fellow council members who are new to talk to us, some of us who have done this before, about your questions about, that you might have about this, because there are a whole bunch more coming. So, you know, if you feel a little lost right now, please reach out and let's discuss it so that you're more prepared for next time.
Thank you.
And just to restate, no further action for compliance this year will be taken, but they'll have to do compliance again for next year.
For this company?
For this company, correct.
All right. Next on the agenda, Michelle?
Resolution 2, 2024, supporting an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine and Israel.
All right, so I'm the petitioner on this one, and thank you all for your patience and your attention to this. And by way of introduction, I'm just going to read it. It's not that long. And it is a resolution supporting an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine and Israel, the return of all hostages, and the delivery of humanitarian aid, and affirming opposition to anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab bigotry, with the aim of achieving a just and lasting peace in the Middle East. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians is a violation of international humanitarian law, and whereas 1,139 Israelis and foreigners were killed by Hamas on October 7th, 2023, and over 26,000, now over 27,000 Palestinians have been killed since October 7th, 2023, with 70% of the casualties being women and children. And whereas continued hostilities have forced 85% of Palestinians in Gaza, that's over 1.9 million people, to flee their homes, being displaced multiple times. And whereas more than 100 Israeli hostages are being held by Hamas, and more than 8,000 Palestinians are held without due process under Israeli martial law. And whereas more than half of Gaza's homes have been damaged or destroyed, over 370 educational facilities have been damaged, and at least 30 of the 35 hospitals in Gaza are not functioning, over 2.2 million people in Gaza are at imminent risk of famine, and 94 journalists have been killed. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk without an immediate and permanent ceasefire, restoration of basic necessities, and delivery of adequate and unconditional humanitarian aid without delay to Palestinian civilian non-combatants. And whereas the United States government holds immense diplomatic power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, and U.S. law requires that foreign military aid not be used in the contravention of international law. And whereas the United States provides ongoing military aid to Israel as well as humanitarian aid to Palestine. And whereas the majority of countries in the United Nations have voted in favor of a ceasefire resolution, and millions of people worldwide, including residents of Terre Haute, Indiana, have joined in peaceful protests since October 7th to amplify this call. And whereas Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry, and anti-Semitism have risen significantly across the United States and around the world because of these events, with direct impacts on communities, from synagogues and mosques to schools, universities, homes, offices, and places where communities gather, as well as at protests and rallies. And whereas all of these forms of bigotry, violence, and oppression serve to divide our communities and weaken our efforts to achieve collective safety, justice, and true multi-ethnic, multiracial, multireligious democracy here and everywhere. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Terre Haute City Council that we unequivocally condemn both the attack on October 7th, 2023, on Israeli citizens by Hamas, and the subsequent killing of civilians in Gaza and the West Bank by the State of Israel. And we affirm our commitment to combat anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry, anti-Semitism, and Islamophobia. And we affirm our support for all people in Palestine and Israel to live in peace, justice, and security. And we affirm our support for the rights of all people, including residents of Terre Haute, to live, learn, work, play, worship, and engage in peaceful protest, all without intimidation, coercion, or the threat of violence. And we affirm the First Amendment rights of all citizens to criticize government or government policy, and affirm that criticism of governments in Israel and Palestine is not inherently anti-Semitic or anti-Arab. And we affirm our commitment to United States laws requiring that arms transfers be used in accordance with international law. And we support the delivery of immediate, unconditional, and sufficient humanitarian aid, including water, food, energy, shelter, medical, and sanitary supplies to the non-combatant people of Gaza. And we ask our congressional delegation to support all resolutions and legislation that match the values stated in this resolution, especially those aiming to alleviate the urgent humanitarian disaster in Gaza, the release of Israeli hostages, and peaceful diplomatic processes resulting in equal rights for Palestinians and Israelis. And finally, we direct the Terre Haute City Court's office to provide a copy of this resolution to United States Congressman Larry Bouchon, United States Senator Mike Braun, United States Senator Todd Young, and the President of the United States, Joe Biden. I think that words of this resolution speak for themselves. And on that note, I will yield to public comment.
Public comments, Mr. Hyde?
Yes. Right now, in the world, there are two big sins going on. Russia trying to take a former colony back into Russian care. That war is just simply over greed. And Israel, yes, they were attacked. I have no sympathy about that. I have sympathy for that. What I don't have sympathy for is how they're getting even with the, with the people that did it. They're using American missiles that we gave them to blow up parts of the territory that they don't control. And they're killing lots of women and kids that have nothing to do with what happened to Israel. They are in fact acting no different than the Nazis acted 70 years ago when we liberated Israel and we set up a new home for them. I do not like the way the current leader of Israel is fighting this war. If you were a man and all your soldiers were men, you'd get your guns and you'd go find the terrorists that actually killed your people, and you'd find your hostages, if you had to go room by room. But you do not accomplish that by blowing up big parts of a country so you can't get around in it. You don't accomplish that by making half the country homeless. I see on the news the pictures of their homes. They are going way too far and doing it the wrong way. And if they don't stop, I'm afraid even I am going to hold them accountable for what they're doing. And I am a liberal, for God's sakes, a real liberal. And I believe in Israel and its right to exist. I do not believe in an Israel that goes overboard with violence to get even with anybody. They are allowed, the terrorists are literally creating Israel, turning Israel into a monster. But really, who's turning Israel into a monster is the leadership of the military in Israel. They are fighting this war way, way too wrong, and they need to stop. Catch a breath, have a ceasefire for a while. I don't care if the ceasefire gives the enemy time to regroup, don't care. If they were a real country like the United States of America, they'd have the ceasefire, and for the next two months, they'd have so many damn spies over there figuring out where all the people, all the enemies were, that when they started up again, they'd know exactly where to go to get them. But they don't want to do that. But that's my opinion, and I'm alone in this opinion. But I don't think I am alone. I think the American people right now are seeing this constantly. And I'm afraid Israel better watch out what it's doing, or it's going to lose a lot of support, far more than they want to lose. And the enemy of them will win. If you want to make any country a terrorist, have them act like Israel is doing now, and they become the very terrorists that they're fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sister Barbara Batista, One Sisters of Providence. I live in St. Mary of the Woods, Indiana. I also, I am standing here representing the Interfaith Council of the Wabash Valley, of which I am the current, I'm a member of the executive committee. We have a very flat organization, so there's six of us that share it. And I also represent the leadership team of the Sisters of Providence in standing in firm support of this resolution. I'm glad that you read the whole entire resolution, Congressman, Councilperson Nation, because I was going to read parts, so I'm exempt from doing that. What I will, what I want to say is I want to remind you what it means to exercise leadership, moral authority, and the civic duty that you have as councilpersons to protect and preserve the democracy that we experience here in Terre Haute and Vigo County, and also beyond. As we heard in this resolution, our government right now is complicit in the slaughter of a whole nation, of human beings. And I'm not going to get into the whys and wherefores. You heard a lot of numbers, and it's atrocious what's going on over there. What I want to say is it's not always so easy to exercise the kind of leadership that's going to make some people not real happy. But I'll tell you, and I've been the recipient of some letters after I've made public statements or we've made public statements, and it's not easy when you're faced with the idea or the thought that somebody might not be happy with what you're about to do. Some Jewish person might not be happy because it sounds like you're, like we would be condemning Israel. But in fact, as the resolution says, it's the rights of citizens to criticize their government, not the people, just the actions and the policies and the statements from a government. And that's what I believe this resolution is doing. Symbolically, you're saying, hey, let's be human beings. Let's stand up for our common humanity. Let's affirm and support the rights of all people, including those here in Terre Haute. And granted, it's a symbolic gesture, and yet I think it has the power to limit, slow down, perhaps even stop the Islamophobia, the anti-Semitism, the racism, the bigotry that's going on right now in this country. So I just urge you to step into, or step up to that leadership that you all are already exercising, and do it in a way that, that says, wait a minute, people have the right to live in freedom and to not be slaughtered with the help of our government. So that's why we're coming to you, because you're part of government. And to send this message to our representative and senators and the president is a powerful statement, and it says a whole lot to the people of Terre Haute. So that's really why I'm standing here, again, from the Interfaith Council of the Wabash Valley and the Sisters of Providence leadership team, to say, let's, we need to call for a ceasefire. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and the Council. I apologize in advance if some of my comments are a little repetitious, but my name is Ellie Blaine, and I know this is a very emotionally charged topic, but I'm here to urge you to approve this resolution. And I'm here as a citizen of Terahot, as a mother, and as someone who is truly devastated by the crisis that worsens daily in Gaza. I'm not Jewish, I'm not Muslim, I have no personal connections to Gaza, but I'm deeply troubled by the genocide. And yes, I'm using genocide purposefully of Palestinians on behalf of Israel and financially supported by the U.S. that is unfolding under the guise of self-defense. And I believe at the heart of it, this resolution is simple. It shouldn't be uncont, it should be uncontroversial. It calls for a bilateral, permanent ceasefire, release of hostages, unobstructed humanitarian aid, and it really calls for peace. It calls and stresses for the importance of protecting your constituents here from hate. It's a local issue because we're all directly implicated. You may say that we should take it up with our federal representatives in Congress, and yes, we're pushing the issue there. U.S. city councilors are our citizens' closest channel and access to government, and you have the power, as stated, to send a very clear message locally, regionally, and nationally. On January 26th, the International Court of Justice ruled that it is plausible Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. They issued provisional measures in effect immediately that required Israel not to commit any of the acts prohibited in the Genocide Convention. You know, when taken together, that is really calling for a ceasefire. And yet, we have seen complete disregard of this ruling and over 1,000 deaths in just two and a half weeks. It's really imperative to acknowledge the loss of life on both sides, right? We need to recognize the humanity on both sides of this conflict. There's a lot of numbers out there, but it's incredibly impactful that this, that the death toll of Palestinians has surpassed 28,000, including 11,500 children. It's devastating and hard to even comprehend that number. Hospitals have been consistently under siege and the target of direct fire, leading to hospital staff being killed, preventing wounded patients from safely entering hospitals. And just today, I saw a video of an ambulance being directly bombed in the midst of a crowded street trying to get to the hospital. The situation in Gaza is an utter humanitarian catastrophe. And this resolution plays a really pivotal role in ending this violence, and it urges the administration, Biden administration, to provide humanitarian aid to Gaza. You know, there's blockades at entry points in Gaza by Israeli protesters that have set up camp to prevent the very limited aid that is trying to get in. I've seen UNRWA food trucks being bombed specifically. The entire population in Gaza is facing crisis levels of hunger. Nine out of 10 people don't eat every day. And kind of moving on to lasting peace, yesterday Netanyahu rejected a ceasefire agreement that would have allowed for a phased release of both Israeli hostages and Palestinian prisoners, delivery of humanitarian aid, and withdrawal, full withdrawal of Israeli military forces. But on this point, Netanyahu rejected it and responded that the military campaign will not end until absolute victory is achieved. Please understand that this conflict did not start on October 7th. Listen to our Palestinian neighbors that know the history. The attack on Hamas was an atrocity, yes. This is an atrocity. We should have, families should have the proper time and space to mourn those who were killed. Their military response does not allow for that time and space to really mourn what happened. We do not fully understand the details of what happened. Understand that the cause of recent violence in Israel is decades-long illegal occupation, military occupation of Palestinian land, expansion of illegal settlements, and discriminatory system of apartheid that denies Palestinian equal human and legal rights. Getting close to done. The war on Gaza on Palestinians asks of us, will we express our shared humanity? Will we stand up for peace? Will we oppose the use of U.S. funds by a state that clearly commits war crimes in violation of international humanitarian law? To call for a free Palestine and a truly free Palestine is to call for freedom, dignity, respect, and sovereignty for all. I understand some are threatened and fearful by this statement. But this is simply a call for equal rights. And I wish to stress again, it is not antisemitic to call for equal rights and dignity for all. Do it for the most vulnerable in our community that don't feel safe. Do it for the people that feel helpless in the face of this genocide. And I truly thank Councilor Nation for his moral integrity, for bringing this resolution to the agenda today. I thank you all for your attention to this matter. I understand it is different than some of the resolutions that you consider a very charged issue right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Kathy McGuire, 1118 North Six and a Half Street, Terahot. I know that city councils do not have any direct power regarding international issues. However, in these peculiar times, I think the council should take a stand by passing this resolution asking for a ceasefire on Palestine. Harretz, and I may pronounce that wrong, which is a newspaper published in Israel that I subscribe to, had an article about a press conference called by five released Israeli women hostages. This was yesterday. A 72-year-old woman called on the Prime Minister to end the fighting. She said if he didn't stop soon, there won't be any hostages left to save. South Africa asked the World Corps at The Hague to take action to declare that Israel is committing genocide. Netanyahu told Palestinians to go to south Gaza where they would be safe. They did, and then Israel bombed them while they were walking to the south part of Gaza. This is genocide. It is against international law for Israel to occupy Palestine, yet they have violated this law ever since it was carved out of Palestine in 1948. They have committed violence on Palestine for 75 years. You don't usually hear about that because you just hear the Israeli side in the press, not the Palestinian. After the Six-Day War in 1967, new boundaries were set, but Israel never heeded them. Instead, they recruited young Jews from the United States and other countries to be settlers and start families, and thereby take the land back from the Palestinians. The current war on Palestine is revenge for horrific crimes by Hamas in October. The retaliation has gone way beyond the standard of an eye for an eye. More than 27,000 Palestinians have been killed, many thousands more are wounded or cannot be found because they're under the rubble. Israel is cruelly refusing to allow critical medical supplies and even water into Gaza. Almost every hospital in Gaza has been bombed. The majority of Americans, including many Jews, American Jews, want a ceasefire. American Jewish organizations, including Jewish Voice for Peace, have called for a ceasefire. This faraway war has resulted in the escalation of hate crimes against both Jews and Muslims in the United States. This affects Terahot because both Muslims and Jews are citizens here. Many of us see doctors who are either Jewish or Muslim and came here as either immigrants or as refugees. No doubt, some of these war victims will be trying to immigrate to the United States. Studies have shown that domestic violence in the United States goes up even when there's a foreign war. Considering that Terahot ranks top of the list for abused diplomacy, to end this war and to know this is what its citizens want, passing this resolution can help persuade our national leaders to pursue this call for a ceasefire. Already, three cities have passed such resolutions, Chicago, Detroit, and Oakland. And there are many other cities now that are working on similar resolutions across the country. Bloomington will soon be voting on this same issue. Thank you.
Good evening and peace to you all. My name is Adele Alhawani, and I live on 1916 Jasper Street, and I am here to represent the Islamic Society of Terahot. The death and destruction in the Middle East has brought unimaginable pain and grief to countless human beings. Of course. So the death and destruction in the Middle East has brought unimaginable pain and grief to countless human beings. I kindly and urgently call upon the City Council of Terahot to demand three things. Number one, an immediate ceasefire and release of hostages. Number two is protection of civilians in accordance with the international law. Number three is the passage of life-saving humanitarian aid. Central to all our religious teachings and social justice principles is the sanctity and the inherent worth of every human being. Every life is a divine gift, and its protection is of paramount importance. We grieve for every life lost and every soul impacted, regardless of their faith or nationality. While our religions may differ in practice, they converge in their teachings. They converge in their teachings of compassion, love, justice, and mercy. These values unite us and compel us to speak out against violence. Our leaders, and we look at all of you as our leaders, should steadfastly advocate for respecting international law, condemn the targeting of civilians, condemn the destruction of homes, vital facilities such as hospitals, schools, and places of worship. Leaders should also oppose the denial of life essentials like water, food, medical care, and fuel. Let's stand together in saving lives. Let's stand together to bring peace, and let's stand together to take away what brings conflict and what brings hatred to Muslims, Jews, or even Christians in the society of Terahot. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your attention with peace.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam President, members of the Council. My name is Antherise Ryan, and I'm the Director of the Terahot Human Relations Commission. The Terahot Human Relations Commission, which is comprised of members of our community, has voted to support this resolution, and they've asked me to come here tonight to speak on behalf of them. The Human Relations Commission, as stated by our city ordinance, is responsible for eliminating prejudice and tolerance, bigotry, and discrimination in our community. This resolution affirms opposition to antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab bigotry. The Human Relations Commission condemns all forms of bigotry, intolerance, and violence that stems from bigotry and intolerance. The Commission believes it's important for the City Council to reaffirm condemnation of bigotry in times of conflict, to show our community that local government stands on the side of inclusion, tolerance, and belonging. The Human Relation Commission also believes in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which states in Article III that everyone has a right to life, liberty, and security of person. The Commission is glad to see that this resolution promotes these values and calls to end the violence against civilians and supports the delivery of humanitarian aid to those in need. The Human Relations Commission thanks you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Dillon. I live at 3748 Anderson Drive North. I'm speaking on behalf of the Indiana Green Party and urging you to vote for this resolution. We have a variety of members, some that have actually worked in Israel in the past and that are very much concerned, not just in Palestine and Israel, but in the entire Middle East in general, about all these fights that are going on, especially like Yemen, Iran, a lot of other places. So we do urge you to vote on this resolution tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Council comments? Council member?
Several years ago, I introduced a, excuse my voice, I've been ill all day. Nothing contagious. I introduced a rule, I think back in 2006. And basically, the rule was that we, if something was not germane to the duties and powers of the City Council, that it was ruled out of order. I don't think anybody in this room disagrees with the intent of this resolution, the wording of the resolution. I don't believe anybody in this room would not like to see a ceasefire, would not like to see the hostages returned. However, my concern, and I'm probably as close to this as anyone, being an Arab-American, my concern with this is that it opens the door for future. And here's my scenario. Next week, someone maybe from Ukraine will be here and want us to do something for the Ukrainian cause, someone from, that we have no control over, our duties aren't, we aren't, that's not part of the City Council duties. Someone comes and wants us to make a statement concerning abortion or immigration. And I think that was the reason the rule was intended. It wasn't intended to not support things like this. It really was intended to protect this council from having to vote on issues, not necessarily this type of an issue, but issues where we could be, for lack of a better word, backed into a corner. I'm all for individuals writing their congressmen and their senators and urging a ceasefire, urging a return of the hostages. Again, I commend Councilman Nation. I know that his heart is in the right place. I also know that, like I said, I thought the wording was excellent. I'm just leery of what it could cause in the future for this council. And I think, you know, you all know, and I know, that if this resolution were to pass, it's going to go to the desk of Braun and whoever, and they're going to put it with the other letters that are there, and it's going to stay there. If Netanyahu and the Israeli government and the Palestinians and the people in Gaza and the South Africans that wanted a resolution weren't successful, I can't see how this resolution will make any kind of a difference, other than, I guess, a feel-good type of thing. Again, I am not against the wording. I am not against the resolution itself. I am just worried that it's going to open the door for us in the future on issues that we may not want to take up, because once you open the floodgate, then you've opened a problem. That's what I have to say I yield.
This is council comments right now. Go ahead.
I studied political science in college, and one of the very first things they teach you is, you know, the branches of government and how each role works and raise responsibilities. And it's, and And if the legislative tries to step in the waters of the judicial or the executive, you start to muddy the waters and people's roles get blurred. The way for effective government to work is everyone has their role, their position, and if we don't fulfill it, our government ceases to work. I have constituents right now in Wood Ridge that every other week, they get brown, undrinkable water at their home. I ran on a platform to finally get a fire station over on the east side to help deal with the casino. These are the issues, you know, the meat and potatoes, as we refer to them. That's why we were elected to City Council. For every -- and again, I appreciate everyone coming and the comments that were made, and I support the wording of the resolution fully. But if we open the floodgates, every minute we spend addressing these issues is a minute that takes away from us addressing the issues that affect our community here directly and our constituents that voted us here. So, for that reason, I feel that issues like this should not come before this council. Section four, paragraph O of our rule says, "Resolutions or ordinances calling for declarations of policy by the council on public controversies unrelated or not germane to the powers of the council shall not be in order." I feel that this resolution falls right under that. So, unfortunately, if this does come to a vote today, I would have to vote no, just on the basis that that is not our role here as City Council. I feel that there's other things we can do, you know, Amnesty International is a great organization, you know, the peaceful protests, that those are the types of things that we can do as individuals. But as members of City Council, we need to focus our efforts to what we can concretely do to effect change here in our city.
Councilman Taylor?
Yeah, I have to agree with Councilman Azar and Amanda, and one of the things I want to say is, our rules are important. What's happening over in the Middle East are just a bunch of people breaking rules, right? And I think it's very important that we adhere to the rules that we have here, because, I mean, we set down rules every day for people. I mean, that's what we do. People come and want to hear, they want a zoning, they want things, and we tell them how it's going to be or not be. It's awful difficult for me to, for us to break the rules and then turn around to other folks that they have to listen to what I got to say. So, I agree. Again, I don't think, with George, I don't think anybody here is against the wording. But again, I really have to believe that we have to sit by our rules and stand by our rules, or we break the integrity. I yield, I'm sorry.
Any other council comments? Councilwoman Hinton?
Got it. President Boland and two fellow council members. I don't know, I couldn't be quiet on this. Councilman Azar, I appreciate your wisdom, a lot of wisdom. You said you came up, pretty much wrote that rule. Thank you. I appreciate your wisdom. I lean into wisdom. There have been some people across time who broke rules. Martin Luther King was a rule breaker. So many people. Harriet Tubman was -- this is black history, so I had to say something. Harriet Tubman broke some rules. John Brown broke rules. Rosa Parks broke rules. I'm not saying this is a bad rule, but it, for me, to hear the heart of Councilman Todd Nation and to hear the heart of the people that we have been called to serve. Yeah, we have some nuts and bolts and some meat and gravy stuff to get to, and we are the legislative branch of our city. I studied political science too, an undergraduate. We have an executive branch, who is our mayor, who most, a lot of his job is going to be symbolic. He will be cutting a lot of ribbons, turning shovel, turning dirt with a shovel. He would be attending a lot of grand openings. A lot of his time is going to be doing that. This is a symbolic nature of some of the work that we do. We hear the voices of the people that we represent. I did not hear any objections from the folks who spoke tonight, and we represent them. We're the voice. And if no harm or no good can come from this resolution being passed, at least we've heard the voices, at least we, the voices that we serve, we are, we're no, they selected us, they trusted us to be their voice. Now, I believe if other stuff come before us, abortion or anti-racist resolutions, I worked at Indiana State University, and when black people were being killed in the streets, we had, we asked our president for an anti-racism policy or an anti-racism statement, just a statement, and the university said no. Actually, they didn't even respond. And so, we have pockets on the university where there are anti-racist statements. Now, in the city government, we have a pocket, at least Human Relations Commission has a statement on this, and they are supporting this resolution. And I don't understand why it would be difficult. I hear what you're saying, that it would just open the floodgates. Okay, we take a drop at a time. You know, we'll take a drop at a time. When it happens, we deal with it then. But what would be the harm of somebody coming to us, saying, "We want you to support this for our community"? We have folks in our community who are Jewish, who are Muslim, who are Arab. They are suffering because they have, some have family in those communities. It impacts our community directly in many, many ways. I couldn't sit and just not say anything about this resolution that I think is important for us to even have our name listed as a community that supports and calling for ceasefire, complete ceasefire, aid to dying people in both of those nations. I yield.
Thank you. Any additional council comments?
Call for the vote.
Yeah, okay. You have a comment?
Point of order.
Councilman Dinkle?
At this point, I think we need an interpretation of the rule. And my understanding of parliamentary procedure would be that to rule whether something is in or out of order would be at the presiding chair, the presiding officer. So, at that point, I guess I would ask for a ruling.
Do you have a microphone?
Sorry. At this point, since there's question about whether this is in or out of order per our council rules, my interpretation of parliamentary procedures is up to the presiding officer to rule something in or out of order. So, that's what I would ask at this point.
So, at this time, I'm going to ask our newly-appointed city attorney to give us a legal opinion on his interpretation of our council rules. Section four, letter O, Mr. Slakel, if you please.
Yes. So, I'm in agreement with Councilman, with Amanda. She's --
Thompson.
Thompson, sorry. She read, she read the rule, says, "Resolutions or ordinances calling for the declaration of policy by the council on public controversies unrelated or not germane to the powers of the council shall not be in order." And I think that's a pretty specific rule and pretty easy to interpret. I grant that the resolution is properly before the council. However, I believe that a passing of that resolution would violate the current council rules.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, and I want to thank Councilman Nation. I want to thank everybody that came out to speak in favor of peace. I think all of us here agree with that. My sticking point with this, and it's been tough to try to come to a decision on this, if this rule wasn't in place, I would vote in favor of this today, because I believe we do need peace. But we are bound by law, and we are bound by our council rules, and we took it to do that. So, that's what I look to. If we disregard this rule, what's to stop us from disregarding another rule or another state statute or something in the Indiana Constitution? It seems easy just to break a rule once, but once you've done it once, then I worry for us setting that precedent. I yield.
Thank you. I think I'm going to take a five-minute recess to process this. Can I take a five-minute recess so that we can process all the information that we have before us?
Sure.
Okay, so, we're going to recess the council meeting for five minutes. We'll be back 7:35. So, in discussion with legal and with our council and our resident parliamentarian here, Mr. Dinkle. Councilman Thompson as well, we have decided that this resolution was properly filed, it was legally filed, and so with that, I will entertain a motion on the resolution.
Madam President?
Councilman Nation?
I move for approval of Resolution Two, 2024.
Second. I have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution Two, 2024, made by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Hinton. On the roll call?
Roll call.
Michelle will have a roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Azar?
I've already stated my reason, no.
Councilperson Chalos?
For the same reason, no.
Councilperson DeBon?
Yes.
Councilperson Dinkle?
For the same reasons that I believe it's not against rules, no.
Councilperson Hinton?
Yes.
Councilperson Nation?
Yes.
Councilperson Thompson?
For the same reasons I stated before, because of our rules, no.
Councilperson Boland?
Yes.
For yes, for no.
So, it fails because it didn't get five votes. Correct, George?
Yeah.
So, the motion would have required a two-thirds majority vote, and then we did not --
No, required a majority vote.
Majority vote, I'm sorry. And we did not get that, so the motion fails. Mayor Sakban? Has some comments?
Council President and members of the City Council, into the community that's here, the community that is not here, and the community that simply does not care to be here, here's my statement today. In 2023, the United States House of Representatives passed only 27 bills. They normally pass around 300. Today, we heard powerful testimony asking for a ceasefire, asking for billions of dollars to go to humanitarian aid, asking for the money that we give to other militaries not to be used against women and children. Having been in the positions of many of the soldiers in both of the armies, it can be very difficult when men and women in suits thousands of miles, thousands of miles away, are dictating the laws of armed conflict. But let me be upfront here today. We heard the testimony of some from the community today, a testimony and a resolution that I do in fact believe with the verbiage. If we really want to hear the voices of the city and the voices of the folks here today, we have to vote. We have to vote not just in city elections, in state elections, in federal elections, but we can exercise our concerns and our frustrations with the same elected leaders who, like Councilman Azar said, would likely have put this resolution on the side of a desk. If you are truly frustrated, that upset, you have an opportunity this May, this November, and all the months leading up to find a candidate that you're passionate about, to find a candidate who will go not to Terre Haute, but to Washington, DC, and display the same character, the same frustrations that you have here today. And let me say something else. I do not believe that the mayor's actions are symbolic in cutting ribbons and writing proclamations. What I do believe is the actions of a mayor and an administration truthfully do matter and make people's lives better. I knew this resolution was coming up two weeks ago. Do you know how many minutes I spent working on it? Zero. Zero. Because I spent time worried about millions of dollars of federal, state, and local investments that can make not just the people in this room, but the 58,500 people in Terre Haute's lives better, folks in Vigo County's lives better, families who want to move here, and families who are thinking about leaving here because of policies at the state level affecting Hoosiers alike. I do believe that there is a time to stand for peace. I do stand for peace. I agree with the resolution. But I don't have as many rules as the City Council. Every day, I have someone reach out, every other day, and ask for a proclamation. A proclamation is coming up for Human Trafficking Day, another cause that I strongly believe in, raising awareness for those who commit that horrific crime. Later this year, we'll have a World Peace Day. I will be writing this proclamation on that day, which is September 21, 2024. Because it is symbolic, because it is World Peace Day, I will happily sign a proclamation with the same exact verbiage, except "resolution" instead of "proclamation" will be changed, that we see here today. And I will display that and stand for peace and apply that at the appropriate time. Thank you, thank you all. We hear your voices, we hear your concerns, but I do agree with Councilwoman Thompson. And if I were on the City Council, I would have in fact voted no because of the rules outlined within the council. But thankfully, as of today, I'm the mayor. So, I'll take a different course of action and stand for peace as the Executive of the City of Terre Haute. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Mayor, I hope you didn't take that I said you only do symbolic stuff.
You're a bit generic.
Okay, but I know you do a lot more. You're the hardest-working man in politics.
I just liked your quotation about wisdom. That's all I wanted.
You just look wise.
You can tell how hard it is for us to follow an agenda here, right?
Are we done?
We're done, we have an agenda item that you need to take care of.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, made by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Nation. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?